Called order the city council work session for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 13, 2021. It's now five o'clock. The city clerk, please go roll.
Mayor Speaker.
Here.
Council President Mark Olster.
Here.
Council President Tony Jacob.
Here.
Council Member Scott Ritter.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Ralph Nurse.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Does term call number one, consider request to rent civic center for craft beer festival. Reed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Jared Thomas had planned on coming, so he may come in still late, but I'll get started without him. This event, the craft beer festival hosted by Leighton Broadcasting, they rented the civic center from us in 2019 for it, and everything with that event, I thought, went very well. I thought it was a really nice event that they put on and good for our community, a good use of the civic center. So we intended and wanted to have it last year and, of course, had to cancel it just due to COVID restrictions. So we're excited and hopeful that we can do it again this year. The date would be September 25th. That is a week before the arts and craft show, which is, which they're planning to hold again this year as well. So setup wise, it works well for us to be able to kind of set it up and leave some of the tables and equipment up for the following week. So there's an agreement in there. I think the only thing that needs to be finalized still in the agreement is Leighton is still working out who they're going to have their temporary liquor license served through. But Megan has been in pretty good communication with Jared, and I'm sure we'll have that all straightened out well in advance of the event.
Anybody have any questions for Reed? I see none, sir. Move on to number two, report of fundraising feasibility study findings and recommendations.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. President. Mr. Andy Ko is here with me. Andy, if you want to get set up on the computer there, we'll maybe just take a minute. We have a PowerPoint, so we'll take a minute just to make sure we can get the PowerPoint pulled up and shared on the screen. Thank you, Megan, if you're willing to help with that. As they're working on that, I'll just introduce Andy quick. I would say, just in general, the process that we followed for this fundraising study, if you all recall, in March, we went through an interview process. We had three or four firms that Mr. Murphy and I interviewed and ultimately selected Convergent to do this interview study over the process of three weeks. Andy and Mr. Len Romano were here from Convergent conducting interviews with a list of what we viewed to be prospective donors for a project in the recreation realm that we've talked about. I would say, just in summarizing, before I hand it over to Andy, that I think that Andy and Len did a really nice job in leading us through this process. I think the feedback I got from the people that interviewed and participated is that they felt really confident in being able to speak openly with Andy and Len, that they felt the process from start to finish remained confidential and that they were willing and able to present their feelings towards this survey. And I would say thank you to everybody that was willing to be a participant in the survey as well. I know we had to really work hard to get Mayor Gander to participate in it, but I know it was valuable. And I think it was very valuable feedback that we received, not only on the fundraising piece of it itself and potential dollar amounts that can be raised, but just even on the feedback that we needed to hear about the projects and what we're pursuing for projects and how we can use some of the input that we got from this list of stakeholders in our planning and the next few steps here. So I think it was a great process we followed and excited to have Andy here to be able to share their findings with all of you tonight.
Thank you, Reed. I appreciate everyone's time.
Make his mics on.
Sorry? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Reed. Appreciate everyone's time and having me here this evening. I appreciate the partnership of the city. The staff has been wonderful to work with, and this has been a report that's a long time coming. We, I'll walk through today, really, what I plan on covering. You have, there's a bit of written report that was provided, but today is really sort of a high level overview of our findings and recommendations. We'll do a little bit of a review about the feasibility study itself and the process. We talk about our findings. There's always challenges. We'll talk through the favorable factors, and then based on the information that we collected, what are our recommendations and next steps, and then we have time for Q and A at the end as well. So quick overview and the rearview mirror. We were retained in March. We finalized the materials, the draft prospectus of the plan, the budget. We put together a cover letter, and then we put together a prospect list. I think we started around probably just over 100 names, individuals, organizations, community leaders, business leaders. Our goal is not to interview all of those folks, but 40 to 60 is really what we're looking for. And I will say, we're looking for more quality over quantity. We're looking to meet with the right people, the real individuals that we feel that are community and business leaders, that their opinions are very well respected, and individuals that could obviously help fund the effort. So we took a lot of time and effort to figure out who we would like to talk with, and we ended up at the high end of the 40 to 60 goal range that we started out with. And it was, I'm going to talk through in just a minute, the, not only just the individuals, but the organizations that were represented, but I think we got a very good cross section of the community. And the interviews were done in May and June. We did them over a three-week period, and as Reed mentioned, Len Romano from our firm did the majority of the interviews. And I will say that Len is probably our most senior project director that we have on our team of about 35 campaign directors. One of the really critical components of doing a feasibility study is that we're not running around town with someone from the staff. We're not running around with a city council member. The whole idea about bringing in an outside firm is that we can sit across the table from individuals and assure confidentiality. So we can ask some really tough questions. We can be candid and confidential, that people are comfortable sharing their feelings, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. We encourage that candid feedback. And the whole idea, one of the first things that we're asking about, for those of you that were involved in one of the interviews, we're actually asking questions to make sure that the organization that we're representing has asking rights. And what does asking rights mean to us? It means, do stakeholders feel confident in the organization that we're representing, that they, if they're writing big checks, that the money will be well spent, and that the goals and the plan itself will, you know, that the organization will follow through and meet the goals that are laid out in the plan? That's pretty critical for us. We got a lot of feedback on the plan itself, and then we talked through the goals and objectives. And then, obviously, we asked about the financial support. If this project were to move forward and there was a fundraising campaign, to what level might you personally or your company commit dollars? And then we talked about campaign leadership. It's something that's absolutely critical in our fundraising efforts. The money's great, and it will pay for the programs and the items that are laid out in the plan itself. But if there aren't the people that will put their name and/or their company name behind this during a fundraising campaign, we know that you'll struggle. So that's a really critical component that we look for. So here's the classification that I talked about. It was really a very broad representation of the community. There was really no one specific sector that outweighed lots of the others, but in general, I think this is kind of something that we're looking for. We wanted to get a nice, broad cross section of the individuals that we interviewed during the study. We kind of softened up the interview with just some general questions, trying to get an idea of how comfortable people feel about the economy, and obviously, coming out of the pandemic, you know, this is just a general question, but it kind of gives a little bit of a peek of how comfortable people feel about the economy and about their personal situation. The local economy, almost about the even group, thought it was strong versus unstable, but the vast majority thought that, even given the circumstances, that right now, that at least the local economy has weakened, but it's very stable. So we asked a handful of questions, again, leading up to asking about the organization, actually, asking about the city's asking rights. But leading up to that, we asked if people that had used the city parks and recreation services, if they were satisfied. So 41% very satisfied, 46% satisfied. So you're looking at almost 90% of individuals that we interviewed are either satisfied or very satisfied, which is very good. Just under 5% unsatisfied, and then 7% somewhat satisfied. So these are very good remarks, and I would say better than average. We also asked about, this is a question that gets to people's perceptions. Everyone has a different idea about effectiveness. But to us, you know, when we ask about the organization's effectiveness, do people feel strongly that the organization will carry through with the things that their goals and objectives that are laid out? So the blue, we ask about the organization. How effective do you believe that the city of East Grand Forks is? Very effective, 28%. I don't know. Can we, sorry. I don't know if we can, I can't see the percentage there for the effective side. I don't know if we can move the picture there, or no? I'm afraid I might move something up if. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. So the blue is the organization effectiveness, the perception of organization's effectiveness, and then the orange is the staff. So we ask about it separately. And actually, the staff tested, I would say, almost off the charts. 45% said very effective, 30% effective, 17% unsure. So there were some people that just didn't deal with the staff enough to really be able to rate the staff, and then the organization also tested very well. Again, what this tells us is that people have high confidence in the city and the staff, that if they were to donate money, that their money will be well spent. So this, to me, answers the question about, does the organization have asking rights? So very good, very good remarks. We ask a handful of questions. I think there's three slides here about the perception of the plan itself. And to that end, we ask about, what do you feel is the most important facility to renovate or expand? And then also, what is the least important? So the least important is the blue, and then the green is most important. The ice mechanicals, the ice plants tested 27% was the most important. They feel like this is what we should do right away, and like this is very important. And believe it or not, nobody rated it least important, which I found really interesting. Anyway, I'm not going to go through each one of these one by one, but it gives you a little bit of a sense of where people's priorities are, at least from top to bottom. Same thing here. We talked about some of the economic development outcomes. You know, what do people find most important? That's the green graph, is really attracting and retaining families. I mean, the fact that having quality parks and recreation facilities is really important into, you know, keeping people here and then attracting people to the area. It's really critical. I mean, this is something that's really important to families in particular. I can speak from personal experience. It's extremely important to us as a family to have quality things to do, to get outside for the kids, and that's clearly something that 51%, it's significant, of significant importance to the people that we talked with. Not as important, I guess, that the city expenses reduced, but in general, the attracting out-of-area participants, it was almost split evenly, 22%, 24%. Program outcomes. There was a host of things. I think we even had a couple of additional ones, but these are the ones that gathered the most feedback. Again, most important is the green line, creating a sense of place. This was far and away the most important thing that stood out to individuals that we interviewed, that was one of the outcomes of improving the facilities that were laid out in the plan. And then you can, again, see the rest here. Encouraging healthy lifestyles was important. Increased play and practice time, which was another component of this plan. Recognizing the city as a sports hub was also something that tested quite high. And then you can see the blue lines. It was split up quite evenly, as far as what people felt was least important. So based on all this feedback, you know, one of the things we wanted to find out was, hey, is now, do you think now's the right time to go ask for money? It's always a loaded question, isn't it? A lot of people are like, well, it's never a good time to ask for money, and it's never a good time to have a baby. But, you know, here, most of the people said, yeah, now is the time. And so 72% said yes, 10% was unsure, and just under 20% didn't feel it was time. So this is also a positive sign. It is not ever a good time to raise money, but right now, coming out of the pandemic, I would say that, in general, most of the communities we're working in, it's a very good time. Companies and organizations and individuals came out of the pandemic better than expected, and to an extent, a lot of people are willing to give back to the community, and we found that here. So this is really critical. I talked about the leadership component. The money's great. It's going to pay for the programs and some of the refurbishments and things that are part of your plan, but the leadership is absolutely critical to a successful fundraising campaign. We need committed community leaders, business leaders, that will get behind this and put their name and their company name behind it and say, listen, we believe so strongly in this effort, in these programs, that we have committed X, and we need your help. We've got to make this happen. It's critical. So with the leadership piece, the way that the question is asked is, if this campaign were to go forward, would you be willing to play a leadership role? Leadership role means an active, engaged role, like you would have your picture in the brochure, you would get up at a kickoff event, and you would actually go out and help raise money. So that's not for everybody. I mean, we interviewed a lot of people, as you can see, some public sector. They're not necessarily going to be going, running around town with us and going and asking for money. But to an extent, 40% right off the bat said absolutely. They would be willing to put their name and face on this effort and go out and raise money. It's very strong. Typically, you can take that 19% and smoosh them over into the yes column. If they, if you present a solid plan and you get the right people behind it, and then you sit across from somebody and say, hey, listen, we need your help. Will you do this? Typically, those maybes will say, yes, I'll do it. The fact that it's 42% seems like a lot. It's not atypical. And again, when you're looking at what we're asking for, taking a really visible leadership role, it's actually probably below normal. The door opener piece is a little bit more easygoing, saying, hey, we're not going to ask you to take a visible role, leadership role in the campaign, but if we needed help with so-and-so, somebody that you had a good connection with, would you be willing to go on a call with us and help go ask for money? 65%, so much wider swath, said yes. 12% maybe. The noes dropped all the way down to 23%. To us, this is very solid. This is very good news. The tax increase. We asked this in a couple different formats, and I didn't want to muddy the waters by showing like three different pie charts, but as a whole, the individuals that we talked with, this is their response in regards to the sales tax, that they would absolutely support it, 84% at least. 5% were unsure. So 84% yes, 11% no. Not really much else to say here. I mean, the graph kind of speaks for itself. So there were some challenges, and I'll kind of walk through those, and then we'll talk through some of the positive factors, and then we'll get to the recommendations, and then I'll open it up for some Q and A. So we tested $10 million, a lot of money. We did not find, so I'll back up a little bit. If you're trying to raise $10 million, typically, you're looking for a lead commitment of somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% to 20%. So 10 million's good to do, some easy math. We would be looking for a one and a half to $2 million lead commitment over five years. We didn't find any in the million-dollar range. So that's obviously a challenge if you're trying to get to a $10 million goal. There was an impression, I'm not saying that the plan is hockey-focused, it doesn't matter what I think, the general idea here is that there was an impression from people we talked to that the plan was too hockey-focused, at least to a good number of people that we talked with. Again, just the impression, but that it was more focused on hockey versus the general population interests. It's also not quite as exciting to raise money for something brand new versus infrastructure, fixing things up, refurbishing things. I know that you did a lot of feedback with the general community, and that's what they wanted. They were like, hey, well, let's not build new and spend gobs of money. Let's fix what we have and make good use of our current facilities. But when you're trying to raise money, it's just not as appealing and not as fun and not as easy to raise money for something new versus something that's being fixed up. The 1% tax, sales tax increase, we feel, you know, obviously would have a longer time horizon to pay off versus the swimming pool. It's not something I don't think people would not support. It's just a challenge, nothing more. And then, city must have skin in the game. Just, there was some feedback about, hey, you know, if we're expected to commit 10 million or whatnot, to what level is the city going to come in and pay or fix for some of this? And that was laid out in the plan. I think, as a whole, though, this will tie back into some of our recommendations of going for the tax increase before launching a public fundraising campaign. Favorable factors. I've already talked through some of these, but it's really important to reiterate. The campaign leaders, we found some really strong, visible individuals that would serve as wonderful campaign leaders, which is, again, very critical to your success for the fundraising campaign. There's huge, strong support and massive, massive community pride. I can't underscore that enough. Len was just blown away by the pride and the individuals that he talked with, that people are going to be coming out of the woodwork to make sure that this campaign is a success. And we feel really strongly that that grassroots component of your fundraising effort will be significant. The staff and the organization, the city itself, is held in high regard, so that's a huge plus. Time is of the essence. You know, when you're trying to raise money, it's important that you have somewhat of a sense of urgency, and there's sense of urgency here for a host of reasons. I mean, I don't really need to go into it, but there's obviously a significant sense of urgency with the things that you're trying to fund. And then also, favorable factor, there's non-hockey participants recognize the importance of the project. There's just a wide, I think, swath of individuals out there that support what you're trying to do. So recommendations based on all this information and based on our work in other communities, we are recommending to really focus first on advocacy and planning for that 1% sales tax increase. Technically, this will serve as your lead gift, and it will be much more than the 15% to 20% that we're kind of looking for. But this is kind of a chicken and egg thing. We feel that if, you can run out tomorrow and raise some money, right? There's no question. But with our recommendations, it's very kind of black and white and very simple. Our recommendations are all based on, how can we raise you the most money, not the quick money? So long-term, what is your best avenue, your best path forward to raising, to maximizing the amount of money that you can raise? We feel very strongly that getting the tax increase in place first, then rolling out your public fundraising, private sector kind of fundraising campaign, will be the most effective, and you'll be able to raise the most money that way. It's not the only way to go forward, but that's our recommendation. Recommending to modify the project to kind of focus on the sense of place elements for each particular avenue or venue. And we haven't talked about this too much, Reed, but I think that ultimately, maybe having individual campaigns for the different venues might be more advantageous, because individuals can actually give to the projects that mean the most to them. And so there's some more discussions to be had on that. That's further down the line. Nurturing and engagement efforts of hockey, ice skating, and baseball alumni. You have an amazing group of people out there that are alumni that you can really tap into, but cultivating those individuals over the course of time before going out and asking for money, you'll be better off and you'll be able to, again, raise more money that way. And there's a million things you can do, and there's lots of things contained in our report and recommendations, and we can give you lots more. But there's lots of really cool things that you can do to engage and have lots of touch points and nurture these relationships with people that feel very passionately about sports and about your community, that ultimately, at the right time, when you come and ask for something in return, they'll be ready to commit. And then, year-round program use strategies. There's a lot of things you can do there to ultimately put you in a better position once you're ready to move forward with your fundraising campaign. Handful of other recommendations. There's a couple of bullet points here that tie around putting together a small group of leaders with diverse program interests as an advisory committee to help, and I know you're already doing some of this, Reed. Budget for the repair and replacement of the ice mechanicals, the ice plants. This is something that I know is really important to the community, and I think probably sense of urgency-wise is something that's a pretty high priority. We're recommending to, as I talked through, begin the public phase of the campaign when the sales tax is passed. Again, you could do it sooner, but our recommendation is to wait until you have that piece of the puzzle in place. That will be a wonderful foundation to then really launch your major fundraising effort, and it will give you a chance to put the pieces to the puzzle in place and do the cultivation that you need to ultimately raise the most money. I know you're going through this already now, too, and based on some of the feedback in our report, the program refinement is critical. The beauty about going through a process like this and all the things that you're doing to get that community feedback is that you're not just saying, hey, gang, here's our plan. Now we're going to go out and raise money. You're engaging all of the stakeholders along the way, which is the perfect thing to do. You've made all the right decisions up to this point, and you continue to engage the public in a way that is very, I think will be very fruitful, and it's very beneficial. You're asking for people to participate and then gathering that feedback, incorporating it into the plan, before going out and asking for money. And that is, that, you know, people appreciate that, and it will come back to pay dividends, I think, down the road. The leadership team, I've probably beat that to death, really critical. And one of the things that we do, and ultimately, you can put together, is putting together a return on analysis report. So not just saying, hey, we're going to do all this neat stuff and fix up these facilities. Talk about the economic impact that will mean for the community. So the sense of place is great, and there's ways that you can quantify that, but there's a lot of other things that you can do, especially as you're talking about a 1% sales tax increase, that you can talk to the community leaders and stakeholders about what it will mean to the community from a return on investment standpoint. Yes, we're spending this money, but here's going to be the economic impact and the benefit of attracting families, retaining families, and corporations, companies, and the economic impact of having tournaments. And there's lots of ways that you can go forward and quantify this in a way that it's not just feel-good, hey, we want to be a good corporate citizens, like, hey, gang, this is going to mean something really valuable to the community. But you've got to be able to connect the dots for people, and so they can understand the economic impact of the programs that you're facilitating. So last slide, and I'll open it up for Q and A. X-factors. You want to build a culture of multi-year investment. There's a lot of individuals out there that are maybe just used to doing a quick check and saying, here you go, good luck. But securing the really big pledges, the multi-year commitments, takes cultivation, and it's going to take time. That's just the bottom line. Program refinement, I've talked about. Getting the engagement from your key leaders, it will be really critical. And then that advisory group that I talked about, utilizing refinement committees. You can actually have refinement committees for each individual component of the plan, and different component for, you know, a handful of advisory committees that are focused on each one of the components would probably be in your best interest. But the whole idea, again, with these advisory councils, is that it's going to bolster your long-term investments, your pledges, your commitments from your stakeholders. So happy to, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation. There's more details in the written report, but happy to answer any questions you have. Again, really appreciate the partnership, Reed. You and Katie did an amazing job in packing our calendar and getting us in front of the right people, and I appreciate all your hard work into making us look good.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? Mr. Dmers.
Just wondered, as you went through this process, obviously, this is probably a little bit different. bit different project than most that you guys deal with, most probably private, semi- or quasi-governmental.
Public-private, yep.
Yeah. Which, you know, we like our system of how we do parks and recs. We think it gives us a unique flavor. Just wondering if there were, structurally, if there's some problems or challenges involved in just the fact that we're not a private institution, we're not even, you know, people will give to governments, they'll give to higher education, or, you know, their alma maters and all those types of things, but there may be a kind of a weird feeling. About giving to a municipal government. I don't, you know, I talked to, what's his name again? Was there?
Len Ramona.
Len, and, you know, was asking, you know, are there structural issues with even, you know, tax deductions, gifts, and stuff like that? Is there, are there challenges with us just being a municipal facility? And then is that something that's something we'll have to kind of work around? Or are there workarounds, or is that something we have to kind of go back to?
Yeah, no, there are, if you want to call them workarounds, there's a host of ways that you can facilitate pledges coming in and money being spent, either through a separate 501(c)(3). One of the things that I was just talking to Reed about today, that we recommend, no matter what the nonprofit is, is putting together an oversight committee. Oversight committee is typically made up of your typically major investors, but you always want a diverse group of individuals on there for a host of reasons. Small investors, big investors, and regional, you name it, that don't have decision-making authority about how the money is spent. But it's a group that will help, you know, that you report to, that here's how much money we took in, here's what we said we were going to do with the money, and here's how we're moving along. We're under budget, over budget, and yes, we've done the things that we said we were going to do. That's critical in any fundraising effort because when people give large amounts of money, which we're looking for, right? We're looking for pretty significant commitments. Over a period of time, you want to make sure that those dollars come in, right? So they need to feel confident, comfortable that their money is being well-spent. We didn't really have hardly any kind of pushback, if you want to call it that, of, well, hey, wait a minute, I'm already paying taxes. It was more about giving us advice, like, yeah, I don't know about this, I don't know about that, and I would put more money towards this.
It wasn't?
They didn't, most individuals didn't get in the weeds of figuring out, well, hey, wait a minute.
You know, how would this money be spent?
It was really more of a bottom line, I think, sort of feedback of, here's how I would spend the money if I was doing this, not really, hey, how would this work getting it to the city. But I think, to an extent, to answer your question, we would, there's a whole host of ways that we could facilitate the actual money coming in and how it's spent. But here, we didn't really receive any pushback to speak of.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Mr. Domes?
My question would be, how did you determine on who you're interviewing on all these surveys you took? Did you just go off the list that Park and Recs have of people that are in your system, or did you go to the whole city to speak of? Did you talk to, you know, I mean, like seniors and other people, or did you just basically pick on the ones that were, I'll call pick on, but the ones that are in the system already and that's willing to, you know, be playing hockey or baseball or whatever?
That's a great question, and we spend a lot of time in figuring out who we should talk to because we can't talk to everybody. It's a very targeted list of individuals and companies. So first and foremost, we want to talk with, bottom line, we want to talk with people with capacity, right? People that can write us checks. If we're looking for $10 million, and we came back and said, yeah, we talked to lots of people, but we didn't talk to anybody with capacity. So that's a component. We also are looking for diversity. We're looking to talk to some of the major employers in town. Alumni was a huge push. We spent a ton of time going through all sorts of lists dating back many years. We talked to professional hockey players. We talked to a whole host of folks that have a connection. You know, in fundraising, it's interesting. A lot of people think, well, you just need to go after the people with money. And we have access to Wealth Engine. It'll point us to the people that have the most capacity. But it's interesting, in fundraising, just having capacity is only half the equation. If they don't have kids, if they've never used the Parks and Rec before, there's a million other people asking for money, and they're all lined up asking, right? So in our experience, just because you have capacity doesn't mean they're going to give it to your organization. The sweet spot in fundraising is finding the capacity and the connection to the cause. People that have used the Parks and Recs program either now or in the past, that they're alumni, and preferably having capacity that they would also be able to give dollars. We also wanted to talk to community and business leaders. We talked to government leaders, people that are in positions that are very knowledgeable and would maybe help point us to other individuals that we should talk to. So part of this process was, is organic. Like, we started out with a list, and we went out and did interviews for a week, and we came back and we said, Reed, what about these people? What about those people? What about, this name keeps coming up. Should we go talk to them? And so the list would grow, and we would send out letters and sign up people that weren't even on our original list. So it's a process that we spend a lot of time and effort on, and, you know, we only get kind of one crack at this. We understand, I mean, you know, as you look at some of these pie charts and stuff, it does represent a very small, obviously, percentage of the people here, but we know that you've already done a ton of sort of town hall meetings and other engagements of a lot of the public. And so for us, it was very targeted and very specific as to coming back with the information that we need in order to make some solid recommendations to you about, you know, how much water's in the pool before you dive in, what's the best path forward. Is there a campaign to be had? Those types of questions.
Yeah, I understand when you say that you can't talk to everybody, but when we start talking sales tax and raising taxes and everything else, then we have to talk to everybody. We need to talk to everybody. We need to hear from everybody. And so that's why I was kind of wondering how you pick and chose who you were.
Right.
Because, and then the other thing, one more thing I'd have to say is that if the council decides, and we do that 1%, I sure, hopefully, we'd set that up so it'd be on a timeframe, basically, the same as the pool was, and not just put it on there and be there forever, for a lifetime, I'd like to see. So I would hope we would talk about that. But, so, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor? I like the way this has ended up as far as working toward the sales tax first and then bringing in the donations as to follow on with that. I think in the past, we've talked about, we want to make sure that we use people's tax dollars to build infrastructure and then make it a little nicer with the donations. And I don't know if that was part of the conversation, you know, but do you want seating, or do you want more comfortable seating? Do you want a basic display or a more vibrant display in there? Do you want basic audio/video equipment, or do you want maybe the upgraded for streaming, a little bit better than what we could do in the basic package? And so I'm very comfortable how this is unfolding. If we're going to use people's tax dollars, we want to make sure it's primarily toward infrastructure, and then as we go on from there, to make it even more user-friendly. That feels good to me that we were bringing in the donations for that.
Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Turn this off.
Yeah. All right. Reed's not moving anymore. Another one coming up. Considered Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails application. I'm not going anywhere. I would just, in closing to that one, thank you, Andy, for coming again. Appreciate all the time you gave us on that project.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The item in front of you now is the Red Lake River Corridor Funding Project. We talked about this. Remember, at a work session a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Emery and I sat down and discussed some of the, I'd say, options we wanted to include based off of that discussion at our work session a couple of weeks ago. Recall that the first discussion we brought forward is the application we made last year to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission was reviewed favorably, but ultimately was not recommended for funding, and their commission encouraged us to bring back an application again. The application that we submitted last year was for replacement of the boat ramp on the Red River with a two-ramp launch and a new parking lot that was concrete curb and gutter and a gravel lot. The second piece of that was a new, or an overlaid street on First Street that runs between the softball fields and the Fave Park. And we submitted the application basically to remove the street as it goes down the hill towards the boat ramp and create a dead-end park access road. I brought that back for discussion last week to consider, and there was a little bit of feedback both ways towards it. So I asked Mr. Emery to look at pricing on each and just kind of put together and see what it would look like if we submitted to keep the street in. And when we look at the pricing that I included in the packet on that, the first option is to install the boat ramp as well as the park access road running all the way through the park as it does today. And that total project price is estimated at $1.05 million. And recall that in order to qualify for the project funding, we have to keep the amount of the project as roads and parking lots at less than 40%. So the project between the two, I included that in the packet, it's 41.84% the way it's written today. So the way I review that is, those two projects alone wouldn't qualify for the grant. We either would need to narrow the project scope on the road and parking lot aspect of it, or we would need to expand the project scope in park amenities type of areas to get less than 40%, being roads and parking lots. Okay? The second option we looked at was basically the same application we had last year, which is still the boat ramp as displayed, and then mill and overlay First Street, but still create the dead end. That project dollar amount, you can see, is not all that much higher, about $60,000 higher than keeping the street in. But it does bring us under the 40% rule. It's at 39%. And then finally, the third option for discussion that I gave you is, at a couple of meetings, maybe a couple of months ago, you recall, we talked about the private property area along the Red Lake River off of Eighth Street, and that one potential avenue to slow down some of the pedestrian traffic on the top of that levee would be to put a paved trail in and promote people to use the trail rather than to use the top of the levee. So I asked Mr. Emery to put together just a rough early estimate of what a project like that would look like. And that total, to extend the trail from where it currently terminates now, behind all the private property all the way basically to the gravel road where the water tower comes out, that project, we're looking at around $450,000 for that. So we kind of have three scenarios here to look at. Do we want to apply for this funding? One, do we want to apply for it? If we want to apply for it, do we want to apply for the boat ramp and dead-end park access road? Or do we want to apply for a bigger project? If we were going to do that, I would say that would be one great way of doing it, is add in the south end trail as an option. It would make it a bigger project, a larger local match, but there's some potential that it could help our application status even by asking for a bigger project all at once rather than trying to piece it together year after year with the committee. So just timeline of this all, looking for feedback tonight. If we're going to make an application, we need a pass resolution and to submit the grant application by the end of July. So we just have a couple of weeks left. We would really, we would need a resolution of some form passed at our meeting next week.
Anybody have any questions for Reed at the time? To Reed, Bill?
What was your percentage on number three?
Number three, the percentage is 29.27%.
That puts us well under.
It does. And the local match on that, a 25% match is $377,000.
Reed, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you do the street through and do the bike path and not, and still be another 40%?
The street through?
Yeah, you don't want that.
That's the plan.
That's what I'm showing. That's the third option.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I do the campsite, sorry. Thank you.
Mayor?
Is there any concern about proposing a trail to be built on land we don't own?
Well, yes. I could say there certainly could be. That would need to be worked out, whether we worked that out prior to submitting the application or after we received the funding. We could do that really on either side of it. For the sake of timeliness, I would say we would submit the application. If we were funded for it and we could not come to an agreement with the homeowners to either lease that property or to place an easement through that property, we wouldn't owe any penalty or anything to the commission. They certainly wouldn't like to see us have to back out on an awarded project, but we have that ability to if needed.
One other question. To the option of leaving that road open, that segment then between the launch area and that carries through to Third, there was discussed an option of leaving it open but not improving it, and that would also lower the total cost? Reed, was that an option discussed?
You know, we didn't talk through that and put a price to it. It, you know, it could be adjusted. If we left it open and didn't improve it, you can just not improve the lower section. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's another way to stay into that percentage that we're target.
Mm-hmm.
Or you can just remove, do a mess there, just gravel it.
Yeah. Yeah. That'd be an option. I was gonna, I was gonna say, in option two, where we have create a dead end, there is some, there is a price included in that to remove the bituminous and do a topsoil and seed. So that would, that could be adjusted some to remove that piece of it. Yeah.
I guess that, right now, would be my preferred option as something that would be actionable, would be to contain the cost by doing that. And then in the future, perhaps, come in and improve that if it really breaks down. Because that is not heavy traffic through there, but it is important, occasional traffic.
And I would just say to that, Steve and I went out last week and looked at it. Just so we're clear, if you haven't driven it, drive it. The lowest part of that, the sharp corner where you turn, it is almost gravel already.
Yep.
It's in the worst condition of anything along the street.
Yep.
So if we're okay with that, that's fine. Just know that that, it already is nearly to that state.
Yep.
Anything else? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I was on last time, so I apologize to those that couldn't hear. First question about, kind of along the same lines as what the mayor talked about, is there any easement along that tow that is usable, or is that something that we would have to go through a whole process? On, in the Maplewood addition, same as what the mayor was saying?
Well, yeah, I think the Corps has an easement through there for their levee.
And there's a maintenance easement.
Yeah, is there a maintenance?
There's a levee easement and a maintenance easement. And the maintenance easement is slightly larger than the levee easement.
That's what I was wondering. Is that something that we would be able to access, or is it?
I don't know if you could use, I don't know if you could change the use.
I don't know that either.
Yeah. I guess I could check in on that.
Well, I mean, if we need to drive our utility vehicles down there to maintain it, we might want to pay.
I do have experience in this, in a situation where we dealt with for an easement and putting a trail or a sidewalk along there. You can access, if you have a maintenance agreement or something along those lines. We have with the Army Corps of Engineers there, you can drive vehicles through there to maintain it. However, permanently altering it to, for utility access for pedestrians, those types of things is wholly another, we lost a court case on that. So, yeah, so I, unless there's something out there specifically saying you can use it, I would say absolutely you can't do it.
Okay. And then that leads to the question about, you know, with the, with the actual boat ramp, there, you know, the DNR was very adamant for a long time that we had to show clear title to all that area. Would that be the same case as going through this grant? Would there be a potential to get dinged for not having clear title even? I get you. I would be in favor of going through this. I just want to make sure that we don't dig the whole project because we don't have clear title to that land. Do you know?
Are you asking about the trail?
I'm talking Maplewood still.
Okay. I think that the commission reviews or looks at these projects, it's a, it's all- it's all one application, but they look at each project singularly.
Okay.
Yeah, cause they could do the same when they review this. They could look at our entire application and say, we want to fund the boat ramp and nothing else. Um, so in, in my experience, we haven't dealt with it in East Grand Forks, but up and down the river system, the other communities have started putting in launches from their two thousand seventeen application. And they've dealt with each project on its own. Yeah.
Um, in the, I, I realize that these are, you know, site development plans are not ready for whatever, but just wondering, it's kind of hard to tell with the, with the, you know, the over, the concrete overlay or whatever, the the gravel overlay or whatever, um, how many stalls, like trailer vehicle stall, full, full unit stalls is there? Do you know?
I know that we knew that at one point, but you're quizzing me now. I don't have it in front of me.
I mean, are we talking like twenty five or are we talking like forty or?
More, I would say off the top of my head, more like twenty five.
Okay.
We had an initial drawing that was a larger lot a couple of years ago, and it ended up getting narrowed down to this. We decided to plan for a more, what we consider to be a regular use night rather than um a special event.
Cause we've, I mean, we currently are hosting at least two pretty large tournaments a year. We've got a full league that's once a week that brings in twenty to twenty five. So for sure, you're going to have that twenty five if it's twenty five full on a weekly basis. One of the thoughts I had is, and it's kind of contingent about remove, with removing that is just grading that area to the south where you have your, your ball, your wooden bollards or wooden posts. Grading that area out and having an area that you could remove the bollards to a certain degree and you could park an additional twenty five, just on a grass field or something there. So for large events, um, like a Catfish Days or the Shields tournaments or, or those type of things. You know, you just pull out a few bollards, you wouldn't allow people to travel, travel there or whatever, and they could park on grass. I think, you know, if you graded that area out, it'd look pretty, it'd still look pretty nice over there. Which leads me to my other point about kind of being contingent on um, ending that or dead ending the, that first street. Um, I kind of, I was a bit hesitant about it because I know I've used it to, to go through there quite a bit. Um, but it isn't the only path. I mean, Hill Street is still available. Um, I think that that road, the way it comes down off that hill is going to be, it's going to get worse and worse. Even if you gravel it, you're going to be maintaining it. It's going to be giant potholes there. I would, I'm in favor of actually removing it from, and I would actually remove it further to the, I think it's east, further to the east and or move that existing trail outside of the road. You know, you have, you have kind of the, the trail going through the road. I would, I would kind of pull it back to so that the trail could go on the other side of it. Make it a little hammerhead or something there where people could come um, park there, you know, for the ball dimes of fields, get out, walk down fish, whatever they want to do. You enjoy that area. Um, I really, I mean, it's, I think that that road gets abused more than it gets used. I just, I think people hit that thing, they're going super fast. Well, they don't, they can't know because it's, it's such disrepair, but when it's bladed up, I mean, people are flying over there and then it's just, it's an access to drive in wherever. Um, I mean, it seems like every spring or every fall, well, probably not this year because it's been so dry. But usually we end up with a, a vehicle buried up to its, its uh frame out there that we gotta end up pulling out or whatever. Um, so that would be my recommendation is, is do the number three, but remove the road as well. So then you end up with, it's a little bit cheaper project as well, but um, I mean, it's, it's, it's the most expensive project, but you're probably going to be at the, the Millen overlay is going to be the one thirty instead of one eighty five. So you're going to save fifty thousand on that project. And then do the, the bike path. I would put in for the bike path. I think if we could get that money, we should do anything that we can to get that path done there. I think that the residents would probably like it because I think they don't like the, the people on top of their levees. Um, and stuff like that. So like I said, that, that would be my preference is a number three edited to remove the, remove that, the first street down below the hill and add some grading to the south of the additional, of the lot for additional overflow. I think that's all we know. Thank you.
Mayor.
I, I know I said it a moment ago, but I do think we would be ahead of ourselves. Um, going ahead with plans to place a trail where we don't have title to the land. And I do think, for me, I'm on the trails a lot, biking, running, and I know they're an asset to a community. I, I'm favorable to it. Just for full disclosure, my home is on the end of that street and it would be right behind my house. And again, to be honest, I would say it would be a great asset. But I do know historically, some of my neighbors haven't always felt that way. And that's conversation I feel that should precede any effort to fund a trail again, behind their homes on, this is their property, right? Um, Maplewood was unique when the land was acquired for the, for the levy system. Um, those residents do own all the way through there, all the way to the river. Unlike other subdivisions where the city purchased the land, including the dyke all the way to the river, these residents own that parcel of land and then there's a dyke easement that runs through there. And so it would be important, I think, as a, as a courtesy to the residents of our community that before we secure funding to put something on their backyard, that we have their thumbs up to do it. I do think it would be a, a blunder if we, if we went ahead the way we're considering. That's really what I feel. Again, for me, I like the idea of having it, but I do remember when this conversation took place before. That's partly why the trail ends where it does, is not everyone along there was as excited about it as I would be. Okay, um, and again, just for, for my two cents, I do think having that road uh contiguous um up toward the green site and back to the boat launch is a good thing. And again, it doesn't have to be heavy travel. It could be speed bumps, whatever we need to do, but I mean, I see events and, and a good number of those boats and trucks do want to come up and head south out of there, and that's the way that they take it. Um, I know they could go the other way, but I do think it's a, a better access to that venue to be able to come in from both ways.
Mr. Vetter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of option three, but I would remove that whole Millen overlay of the existing First Street, just leave the that whole portion of it out of there. Um, I'm also in favor of the south end greenway. I understand your concerns, Mayor. But I think a lot of those individuals that originally had objections to it have moved on. And the bigger piece now is them being upset that people are walking on top of the dyke and approaching them as this is an option that may get people off the dyke and not looking in your windows. I think that's what they're looking for.
And I think it's time to have that conversation, like right now. If, if this is a serious proposal, it's time to have that conversation with those individuals right now.
I tend to agree. But so for me, I would look at option three, but just removing that whole first street option out of there altogether. Thank you.
And it's really a conversation we could have pretty quickly. I mean, there's ten property owners there that, I mean, it's not like the entire mile and a half or whatever is, it's ten, so.
Probably five of them listening right now too.
Well, we got ten, at least ten percent.
May I ask any questions for you? I myself looking at option three, I go back and forth with that uh trail, but I think it's needed. I think it's something that has to be discussed. And like, as you indicated, Reed, if we go through it and maybe it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out. But I think we need at least try and you know, fix what the issue is. Um, so my vote would be for option three.
Are the scoring, is there, I mean, if you're right up to the, to the pavement allowed, is that considered okay? I mean, is it either pass fail or is there?
Yeah. No, it's a good question. I, I, I don't, I'd have to look a little closer at the scoring to see if they count that in the specific points for scoring. I don't believe they do. It's just, I, I believe it is ineligible or eligible. It's, they look at the total number, look at the percentage, and if it's over, then they're going to say it's an ineligible application.
May I ask anything for Reed? I see none, sir.
Do we, I mean, do we have enough to have a presentation or a resolution at the next meeting? Cause we kind of need that. We've kind of heard.
Yeah, that's true.
It's the majority saying for modifying that first street. I'll just say my take on it, it sounds like the, is probably the majority for uh at least starting the, the process with the inclusion of that trail and then starting to talk to the property owners on that.
I think you're gonna have to leave, I think you're gonna have to leave that street through there because I don't, I don't think there's any other option. I mean, it's been used, it's still going to be used no matter what. Well, cause you're closing it, but the option is right now it's open, correct?
I agree with Mr. Vetter with that. I think we should just leave that. Why Millen overlay first? Is that your suggestion? I, I, I'm in agreement with that. Why Millen overlay?
You're saying close it off?
No, just take it off the project altogether.
Leave it as is?
Yeah, don't do anything with it. Don't Millen overlay it, don't close any of the streets or just leave it for another day.
You can't shut down that road. It'll be, the, the people that used to go on there are going to go that way in regards if you put a note, do not, you know, road closed or whatever. If we've got people taking off ramp off a highway too, they're still going the old way. I mean, this is a pretty staunch town. When people want to go down the river, they want to do it their way, so.
Um, if I could, Mr. President, the only thing I think for consideration on, and I'm not arguing in favor or against the idea, but just, we talked about it at the Department Head Meeting, Mr. Galst, I brought it up. I thought it was a good point. On the, the First Street Northwest piece of it, our proposed price to overlay that project in total is three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. And if we apply for that and we're awarded, our total project match is three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. So if we apply and are fortunate enough that we get awarded all of it, we can get all three of those projects done for cheaper than we can overlay that street ourselves. And it, I, I don't know what the street side of it is in terms of how long we think we can go before that street needs to have something done with it. Um, but it, it's another day, certainly, but it's, it's on the horizon at some point. And, and where, where do we want that to fit? And I don't want to add that to confuse it even further, but if we're looking at potential seventy five percent match on something, this, it may be worth pointing out.
And remember that you wouldn't be able to do this, that Millen overlay as a standalone project, right? So I mean, it's got to be tied into a component. It's go, it can only be a maximum of forty percent of a project, so we'd have to come up with another project that has it. So now, I guess I don't and ever considered not doing it, but if it's going to be a roadway and it's going to be a through, I could see if you decide, yeah, we're going to dead end it and make, let it go back to gravel and have it a gravel park or something. I could see that, but at some point, like if you're going to have it be the throughway. Seems like we're arguing both things. We want to have it a throughway, but then we're not going to Millen overlay at least the top, like which one would work?
I would be, I would be for the option three and just do what we need to do to maximize what the project is, so.
If we're leaning toward three, um, and this would involve our administrative office, could we please um make sure to send a mailing to those property owners before next Tuesday? Um, that this is under consideration and it would be, of course, no cost to them going through there, but something that we are considering, um, securing funding to put that trail through there. And they should uh plan to attend or, or get involved on the Tuesday meeting into that conversation.
Would, if you're looking at next Tuesday and we have a resolution that's passed, could it be contingent upon approval? Are, um, requiring, acquiring the rights to use, go through there? Or would that hurt you in your process?
So I mean, I was, I was listening to see what Ron was going to say. I could hear him breathing behind me. I, I would say that if approval, maybe I'm off, but if, if disapproval is going to come, it's going to come quickly, right? So if we find out before next Tuesday, or for that matter, before the thirty first, we would need to know by, by July thirtieth, if it's approved or disapproved. If we can do it before then, the resolution could be stated in support of contingent upon neighborhood support or something. We, we could work with Megan on how to word that or phrase that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think we could. Um, I, it couldn't go, I can't submit a project with a resolution contingent on support that's not garnered beyond July thirty first. I would need it. If it's in the resolution, it would need to be decided by then.
I understand.
But just so we alert them and they can be in the conversation on Tuesday, that'd be good.
Carly, you have something?
Um, just maybe a suggestion. I know that Steve, when we talk about the levy remediation, he's going to drop off a letters at those homes that we know. Maybe we could just have a letter put together that we drop off at those homes. And they have a question that, yes, I'm, you know, approve this or not or whatever. I know we're doing that with the levy remediation. I mean, it might be some way to speed up the process instead of mailing it.
I, I would say the biggest thing I would need is, is to make sure, just working with the other administration staff, which properties they are, because I'm not certain of that. But as soon as I have that, I'd be willing to make phone calls or go door to door to each of them and get the answers that we're looking for.
Mr. Helms, do you have something? Okay, I thought you did, sorry.
Could I ask, I, like I said, I, I would be in favor of closing the, the bottom half of the first. But if it is going to be done, could you put signage or reflectors or wood posts or something that delineate where that road is? Cause I think it tends to go away. The way that, the way that that road is situated, it's on a curve, it's on a bottom of a hill, it's going to get blown out fairly quickly. So I'd like to have
Are we in favor of number three then, sounds like? I think that's where we're going. All righty, better move on quick. All right, thank you, sir. Number four requests to proportional process for corporal position. Chief Edlin. Do you have any questions? See none, sir. Thank you. Number five, consider twenty twenty two transit application for fixed route and dialer ride services, myself.
Thanks, Council President. Uh, council members, this is uh an annual application that I have to complete for both our paratransit dialer ride and fixed route uh through the state of Minnesota. Uh, they typically take our cost of service, uh, our cost allocation model that we do for fixed, uh, take twenty five percent of my salary, divide it over the two and subtract fares and any federal dollars. And then with that, then they fund a percentage. Um, typically it's uh eighty percent with a twenty percent local share. Uh, currently with COVID, uh, this last year, we did receive um funds, so a hundred percent was paid for with federal dollars. And we're just not certain um what they're going to fund. So I kind of give you a worst case scenario of what our local share would be. Um, so if you take a look, our fixed as drop. Um, so if you take a look, our fixed has dropped. UND was added to our fixed route service, and so because of that, it divides over more buses, more mileage, um, more passengers. And so our fixed route had gone down, um, cost of service. So we're at 552, 552,000. Um, that includes, uh, salary, training, and, uh, fares are subtracted. Um, one thing that is different is that in, um, 2019 Cities Area Transit, or the city of Grand Forks took over the dial-a-ride service. It used to be a third-party contract that we had. So they charge us that cost per passenger. Um, because they took it over, um, they took over all the administrative charges. So that meant dispatch, mobility manager, those types of things. And so we knew that we were gonna have to remove some of the administrative costs from our fixed route and put it onto dial-a-ride. Um, we, there was some confusion as to how to pull that with maintenance, repairs, dispatch, how we divided that out. So we looked at a report that we have to submit to the national database, um, determined a cost rate of 23 point, uh, $23.50 per passenger. And so our dial-a-ride will go up next year. But in the long run, all it's really doing is subtracting some administrative services from fixed and moving it to dial-a-ride. And so, um, the total cost for both services is a little under 700,000, which is a typical cost for us. And then our local share is right around 100,000. And that again is worst case scenario. Because we're just not sure what they're gonna do with the ARP funds that we've received. If they're going to use those to reduce our percentage of local share or how they're using those. Or if I will get those directly, in which case that will also reduce the local share. So, um, with the transit budget that you'll see, um, there is also a bus that's going to be purchased next year. Um, that has already been reduced from an 80/20 local share to a 90/10. And so our total, um, what we're looking at, total cost local funds will be about 120,000, and that's including purchasing the bus. So, and again, um, I know 15,900 is, is already set in our tip-stip. Uh, the operations for fixed and, uh, dial-a-ride could fluctuate, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, it's been a while since I've delved into the transit. Um, but a quick question. On the, um, cost allocation model, the operating budget stuff?
Yes.
You know, the East Grand Forks share is $540,000 all in Fed and State. Um, Grand Forks is 20, rounded up, 2200 or 20, 2.2 million, which is about 25%. We pay about 25% of what they're paying. Um, but then when you go down to the, the breakdown of actual usage, the hours and miles, we're only at 16%. And we're even, we're lower than UND's 25% share and we're paying 100 or $50,000 more than them. Is there, is there, uh, an arrangement for capital and those things that are offsetting this? Or is it, are we just kind of getting a, an inequitable distribution to be?
It's, it's dependent on, like you said, it's dependent on mileage. It's also dependent on, um, maintenance as well and administrative costs. So, um, we pay a little bit more that isn't included when they determine the cost allocation model. So, cost allocation, cost allocation model is dependent on hours and mileage.
But how come then we are, we're paying more than UND's share when our cost allocation or our peak, you know, is, we're at six, you know, for vehicle hours, vehicle miles, peak vehicle, we're all, well, I guess, on the hours and miles, I guess we're below UND. But the peak vehicle, I guess we're below. But it just seems like we're, you know, for, we're about, what do we, we usually use like a seventh the size or six, you know, of Grand Forks, and it seems like we're.
We're about 9%, so, 9 to 11%.
But we're paying 25% in the, of the operating.
Yes, because we don't have new buses. And, uh, so we're paying a little bit more in administrative and maintenance costs, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Um, and the other thing to keep in mind is that UND, um, still uses the CAT service. They don't have their own specific routes, whereas we do.
I thought they were adding routes, or they haven't switched it over yet, or they aren't gonna do it?
No, no. The, the reason why we took over UNDs is because, um, they wanted to use the CAT service specifically so that they augmented the current routes or the regular routes to include traveling around UND. But we would not have a specific, just a UND route that travels through UND.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I see none, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, consider street and storm sewer repairs on River Road and 12th Street Northwest. Mr. Stroudall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll give a little, a little more background on this project. It kind of goes right into the next agenda item as well. In the fall of 2019, we had high water along, we had a, our flood, high, high water along River Road. Typically in our spring floods, River Road is frozen, and that water doesn't have much effect on it. And it didn't really affect it in the fall, but in the spring after that, the, the water was wicked up under the, under the road and into the asphalt, and we had a bunch of areas that were kind of potholed down or busted out from that water wicking up. So as we were applying for, um, some aid, um, for the Minnesota flood dollars, we had, uh, we had asked if we could get dollars to pay for a mill and overlay. And since that's happening, we took a look at some of the curb and gutter and stuff in that area. A lot of it's in pretty good shape, but right in the intersection of 12th, um, and River Road, there's two catch basins there and another one on River Road just south of that intersection that are in need of repair anyway, is the curb and gutter there is, is, uh, pretty dinged up around the, around the corners of that intersection. There's also a chunk of sidewalk that goes to nowhere on the south side of 12th. And, uh, so what we're proposing is that we would repair that stuff before we would go ahead with the mill and overlay, as well as tie in the sidewalk to a current ADA ramp to the north so that it wouldn't be just a sidewalk to nowhere. It would, it would go up to the, to the one by the parking lot there. And then, uh, and then folks could get across the road and tie in with the bike trail. So, um, we requested proposals on the project. We only got one from OP. Pretty decent pricing for this time of year. And what we're proposing is the chunk of sidewalk that you see on there to repair and improve the three catch basins. And then, um, to do the curb and gutter work required. The sidewalk we would remove on the south side of 12th, it would just be seeded and regular curb around there. And the same goes with the north side, where see, you see the approach coming south from the sidewalk. That would just be removed and seeded in the grass. And that's about all I have. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Jason? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Uh, number seven, review of quotes for 2021 city project number five, mill and overlay on River Road.
Thank you, Mr. Peddly. Um, so we received quotes on Monday, um, for the mill and overlay of River Road. We did send out the request to four contractors. Quotes back from, from all four contractors, so you can kind of see there, I've, you know, tabulated everything. Low bid quote right now is from Agassi Asphalt at 112,937. You can see there, you know, even between the first and second bids, I mean, we received very good competitive bids. Jason said, um, funding for the project, 75% of the construction costs would be funded through the, uh, you know, state of Minnesota through the flood dollars. So approximately about 84,000 of the 112,000 would be funded through the state. But the remaining portion, um, just picked up through state aid maintenance dollars, so. Again, we sent it out to four, I guess reputable contractors. So, um, you know, we sent it out again to four reputable contractors. All of them are, you know, more than capable to do the work. So I think with that, you know, our recommendation would be to award the project to Agassi Asphalt in the amount of 112,937.
Um, Mr. Emery, where, Agassi, where are they out of?
Here, out of, uh, Middle River, New Folden area.
If there's nothing in the rules and whatever it says, I would personally, I just want to keep it local. Keep our local people in play. It's a $5,000 difference, but I think local would be.
That is something we probably have to just look at, all the requirements, specs. Typically, it is a low bid. So that's something we'd want to review with Ron, I think, before we do that. I agree with you. I like to keep it local. That is the, one of the challenges with low bids, so, um, I guess that's something we could look into and. We, it was a request for proposals. Okay.
And then one other question. Um, I see you have crosswalk markings on here. It was brought to my attention that, that parking lot down there on 12th, you know, right there? And then there's kind of a walkway over to the river to go down to do some fishing. There's no markings right there. Would that include that, or is this just at the corners?
That's where those markings would go.
That's where it's for, there. Okay, perfect.
Is there any signage there or not? Pedestrian, there will be. There will be.
Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Thank you. Number eight, discussion on city allocation of American Rescue Plan Act. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Steve Emery maybe can help me on this a little bit too, if you have questions. Um, so we've been looking at the American Rescue dollars that, um, are going to be start, to be dispersed in July. We will get 50% of what our allocation is. Um, at this time, we don't know what the exact amount is. We have an estimate about 104 to 105 dollars per resident. And so we've been, um, looking at ways to spend that money. I sent information on, uh, webinars that, uh, the League of Minnesota put together, Baker Tilly put together, and on the four areas that the American Rescue Plan dollars are to be used in. I sent some questions and answers that you could look through in case you had specific questions. Um, and then there was also a non-exclusive list of eligible uses. Um, the first category has to do with public health, which is more of a county issue. We don't have those kind of expenses in the city. Um, the next area has to do with negative impacts, which, um, unemployment, housing, we don't have those kind of types of, um, expenses. And we have had issues with, um, say, utility billing. We have sent them to the county so that there, um, are possible funds for them to use to do for that. I know the housing, Northwest Minnesota Housing have worked with clients if they're in, in need of that. The next section on serving the hardest hit, um, right in that list under health disparities is lead remediation. And we have looked at, um, houses in East Grand Forks that have lead lines that are presently in the area where we're doing a water project. And so when we looked at that, we came up with 11 houses that have that. And part of our suggestion would be is to use the American Rescue dollars to replace those lead, uh, pipes at, right now, at this time. And, um, the other thing we talked about was, I guess, I, anyway, if there's any questions on that part, then I'll move to the next. But any questions on the lead remediation? I know, um, it came up in the water, water and light commission board about, you know, we, we've done some of these in the past. We haven't had money. We haven't picked up the cost. Um, I did send along in the packet an email from Brian Johnson, our water plant supervisor, or superintendent, excuse me. And having lead pipes to a home is not just the homeowner's responsibility, is also the city's responsibility. And you kind of explained that, that the, um, the amount that is allowed in lead in the water for the city is going down more and more every time. And if we know of homes that have lead, we have to test those homes to see what is in their water. And if the restrictions go down even tighter, we'll have to do that more often. And if they become tighter, then it's actually the city's problem to treat that water. So the end result to that home is that there's less lead in it. And so his suggestion and the water and light commission was that if we can take care of these lead pipes now, it'll save money and time and effort for the city and the water plant treatment if we do that on the front end now. Besides the benefit of serving the hardest hit in the lead remediation. So if there's, uh, Steve, you go ahead.
You know, and the advantage of even doing this right now is, again, we're talking replacement from the curb stop into the home. So right now with the project, we already got the sidewalk tore out. Um, so again, if we can do it as part of the project in the long run, it's gonna save money than if you had to do it later on, because now you're tearing out that curb and gutter or that sidewalk again. So, you know, our, our intent is, like Carla said, there's 11 homes right now that have been identified. So, um, through Veronica and Waterlight, she's got appointments set up with all 11 of those homeowners. So starting tomorrow, we're gonna be meeting with each individual homeowner. You know, talking to them about the lead service lines and potentially, you know, utilizing these funds to help pay for that. You know, and hopefully getting their blessing to kind of move forward with that work, so. So again, right now, 11 services, the contractor was estimating about $5,300 per service. So we're looking at about, you know, 58,300 right now is kind of what we're estimating that total cost for the lead service line replacement.
Better. The 11 you're talking about are just on central where you're doing the project right now? And do we have an estimate of how much, how many other homes in that neighborhood have lead lines?
Kind of a group effort here, so Keith will answer that.
Yeah, Keith Nicholseth, uh, general manager, Water and Light. Yeah, we had that discussion as well. We think that once we do these 11, we're gonna have gotten most of them in that area. Uh, we checked all the rest of the homes on the project. There aren't any additional. And we talked about it at a utility meeting, and there may be a few out there, but we think that once we do this, we'll have a pretty good handle on it.
Uh, their water is also looking at changing out meters. And so they're thinking, once they do the meters, they'll do it in the area where there might be lead. So we could catch them quicker, and if possible, then we could use this money to do those also.
Yeah, because I think you did first, when you did the water line over there, I think you tackled them on first a few years back.
First or third or somewhere.
Yeah, we've been pretty proactive.
Yeah, we, we typically take the ones that we think will have lead over the years, and so we, we've made a lot of progress that way.
And this particular project, we were actually surprised at how many, right? I mean, we kind of thought there'd be a couple, and there turned out to be double digits, you know? So, um, like I said, it's, it's kind of a, why the iron hot is hot kind of thing. That's why we brought it, asked, you know, the president to, you know, put this on the agenda and potentially move on it tonight if possible. But, um, uh, outside of just, you know, the, the cost savings for the city and the, and those type of things, it really is the, it's one of those right things to do, right? We, we're talking about people's health. Oftentimes, people that are living in houses that have lead pipes are, are the, you know, the, the, the cheaper houses. the cheaper houses or whatever in our, in our community that don't have the means necessarily to afford it. So, and this is something that affects generations, right? Even if you, you decide I'm not, I can't afford it now, but then you sell the house and that next family moves in, and, you know, they start their family, they get their kids in there, you know, we're, we're talking about generations of kids that could go through there if we don't take it out right now. So I think probably back to your time on Waterlight, I mean, and we've been pretty proactive about trying to get this stuff out. Before, it was ever a big issue in Michigan and all that kind of stuff. I think we've, we've, we've said this is something we don't, we want to get rid of for our community. And I think this is just one way that we have, it's another tool that we can use to do that. You know, there was, there was some good conversation on the board about the fact that we're doing this now because we have the Recovery Act, our Rescue Plan Act dollars. Are there going to be people that, you know, we just did projects in previous years that we've asked them to come in and, you know, replace, and it's been on their dollar, you know? And we understand that there's a certain, you know, disparity, and there's a certain inequity to that. But frankly, you know, and Carla's laid it out, is these dollars only go into effect now. You can't put them, you know, into, you know, you can't look, put them into the historical fund or whatever. They just go, you know, from now until, what is it, the end of 2023. So we have this limited window. So while it's tough to say, but it's hard, and it's, it's just the way it is. And we, we appreciate those people that have gone and done, you know, their share to get these in. But, you know, we didn't have the funds before. They're in now. They're dedicated for this. So if we don't do it, it'd be, it'd be a, it'd be a crime almost the other way, you know. So like I said, if you've ever heard me preach about funds and budgets, I've always asked for budgets and going through things, you know, like, let's lay out how we want to use things. And I'm still, and I think Carla's going to start talking about that after this, but I think this chunk, we should try to piece off right now, allocate it, and then have a much more robust discussion about how we want to allocate the other $950,000 going forward.
And we are aware of some homes that opt out when we did other streets. So we are aware of those properties, and we're looking at, you know, when we do another project, you know, we're still trying to decide where to do the project and, and hopefully build those in when the project's being done. So we do know that there is some that opted out, and we will be in contact with them. And those will be something that we'll look to do in 2023 or 2022. And the money is available from March 3rd of 2021 to the end of 2024. And we could spend, we could hold it and spend it up to 2016, but we'd have to have a project with the dedicated funds to it. So that is a timeline. So we do, so we do have time to, to plan for it. And so, like Mark said, you know, we'd like to have a vote on this section, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we are having discussions on other things that are available in that other section under improving access to infrastructure. They have water and sewer, and stormwater is actually part of that also, and broadband and security. And so that moves to other projects that we have been looking at, and some of them are upgrades to our SCADA system, which is our security system for the sanitary sewer and our water treatment. And part of that is that we have been doing those upgrades. Part of it is because we just finished the wastewater, the big project in the interconnect and that. So the SCADA is somewhat more robust than what other areas.
I think the SCADA system, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, it's on the stormwater systems?
Yep.
Both, okay.
Yeah. And then the stormwater system, we know the SCADA system or the system that's there is outdated. It was put in when FEMA actually did the flood control, so it's at least 20 years old. And so we're looking at that. Jason and his staff are looking at, because we did have, Corey had gotten us quotes, anywhere from 275 to 500. And so they are just looking to see what all those options are and what the needs are. Even though the bell and whistle might be nice, it's not really a need. So it's, we're looking anywhere from 275 and probably closer in that area. And that's not being done at this time. It's just being looked at. Some of the other projects we could look at is stormwater improvements, wastewater improvements, the infrastructure, the lines. So I guess we just wanted to get out there so you could think about it. But when we looked at the four pockets of money, that's where we kind of saw where we have the greatest need, and it fits right into those pockets of what they want you to spend the money on.
And that, and just so we're clear, too, like, you know, Waterlight or whatever is coming and asking the city to, you know, allocate these funds. But to clarify at this point before is like, that doesn't say that we're done, right? We, we're going to still look in the future. So we want to have as part of that next round of debate is, how much do we want to allocate, if anything, to lead removal as part of that fund as well? So, like I said, I don't want to sound like, oh, well, we just did this, why are you asking for more? But it's, we want to make sure we get as much out of it. That's the board's, I guess, take, I guess.
And we do know there'll be some, so, but we will update you when we have a better number and when we plan to make those changes. But they will not be in 2021.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one thing, to the remaining homes that may have the lead service coming in, I would sure encourage you to be as proactive as you can be to identify those, whether they opted out or whether they've never had a project come through. And maybe a way to go at that would be to put a limit per household of, say, $5,000 to remedy that as a, as a credit. Because someone else, their project might be 10, or 11, or 12,000. And if we wanted to some way make it fair and equitable, might be a way to do that is just offer that as an amount, up to that amount, not to exceed per household. But I sure like the idea, this is the time to get out and fix that. This is a public health issue, and it's just, to me, it's a, it's a thing, we don't want those in our community. We don't want homes with lead service. And any way we can clean those up for, for that family today and for anyone else that might own it in the future, I think it's a good thing. And it's, you know, I think maybe Keith was mentioning, you know, it's really hard because even as they're doing these, you know, meter replacements, I mean, they, they go out there and they, they see, and it's like someone had, I think, put in the copper at the meter or whatever, but then now we're digging up, and it's, and it's led to that, you know. So it's, it's really hard. And I, I would imagine these, like I said before, these are generational things, like people have moved into their house and, and that, I mean, you would never necessarily know, you know, if you have a lead pipe or what. So it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's an unfortunate thing. So, yes.
Sounds good.
Anybody else have anything? Not, I think, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, sorry, excuse me. Thank you for letting me speak.
Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by re-appel. Unfavored say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Move on to the special meeting. Call the order of the City Council Special Meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, is now 6:38. The City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Seadon.
Here.
Vice President Tim Mitchell.
Here.
Councilwoman Ms. Bader.
Here.
Here.
President.
Does term corps. New business, consider authorizing use of the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Move.
Moved by Demers.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bader?
Yes.
Bader?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Demers, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
Thank you all.
I'm losing my mind again. God, I hate when you do that.
Just so we're clear. Because I forgot that I didn't...